Grove Valve. Claudia, you want to do the staff report on this?
Yes, I'm going to be honest here. Commissioners and members of the public, this is a conditional use permit and designer view application in order to renovate and convert a portion of the existing Grove Valve building at 6529 Hollis for offices and high-technology use. The commission may recall that a year ago Andronico's Markets came in and received a use permit for warehouse distribution, a small retail outlet, and some offices in the front third of the building. That is a separate -- that was a separate procedure and it was a separate permit. Andronico's is moving forward with that. And the two-thirds of the building was vacant. And the applicants or owners have now developed plans in order to make approximately 155,000 square feet of flexible office space in the center of the building and then a 550-car garage, multi-level garage at the west end of the building in order to accommodate the increased parking demand. The design of the building would -- the building would be upgraded. It's an actually beautiful example of early industrial architecture at the beginning of this century. It would be upgraded with new glazing, window mullions, stucco, and the brick would be cleaned up, but it would be essentially the same form, massing, and look as it is now. A main entry would be added in the center of the building facing 65th Street, and the main entrance to the parking garage has been located on 66th Street. The project requires a review under the California Environmental Quality Act, and in order to conform to this, we have prepared an initial study under CEQA, which we concluded after we prepared it that there would be no significant adverse impacts associated with the project that could not be mitigated to a level of insignificance. There are impacts that we did find, and they are outlined in the initial study and in the staff report. I'll review them briefly. We found that there were traffic impacts associated with this due to the increased number of trips that would be associated with the office uses. There would be impacts to the intersections that Christie Powell and Hollis and Powell and the applicant would be required to pay their fair share of improvements that have already been established for these two intersections. In addition, the traffic consultant found that the traffic -- the access to the parking garage in 65th should be moved to 66th in order to accommodate the future overland extension, which is a part of our general plan, and that the parking garage access would be better off located on 66th. There are seismic hazards associated with this area, and the renovation of a building like this would require that seismic and structural upgrading be done. That will be -- that has been considered as part of a condition of approval. There could be erosion and stormwater runoff associated with construction activities. The report indicates that discharge permits and erosion control plan would be required. There have been passed hazardous materials at the site, and there would need to be careful consideration and a plan developed in order to protect workers during the remodeling process with regard to lead-based paint and asbestos-containing materials. In addition, there would -- air quality and construction management would have to be handled with regard to dust and noise control, and conditions of approval have been incorporated in the resolution accordingly. We are recommending at this point that you open the public hearing regarding the negative declaration, take any comments and questions and concerns, and if you believe it's adequate and appropriate to -- and it has complied with CEQA and accounted for all the significant environmental impacts that you approve negative declaration number 98-7, which would adopt a negative declaration for this project with the conditions and requirements set forth in the resolution concerning mitigation measures. With regard to the project itself, staff believes that this is a really wonderful example of a reuse of a very important building along the north Hollis corridor, and that the plans show that there has been careful attention to keeping the mass and overall feel, architectural character of the building while updating it and modernizing it for modern -- or for use today. The applicant will go through some of the design features, but probably the most important one from a zoning point of view is the proposed illuminated roof sign that is -- has been shown in the central area, which would be 30 feet high by 80 feet long. It would be illuminated at night, and it would be transparent during the day, but this would be an additional architectural feature added on to the building that isn't there now, quite prominent one, and staff wanted to make sure that the commission was -- had considered this carefully. I think more details are required about this sign regarding the degree of nighttime illumination and a few more architectural details, but I think with a building this large, a sign like that of that scale can be accommodated, and the architect again can provide further details of the transparent nature of it and the fact that it will be a real identifying element of the building. I have very few other architectural concerns, other than that a condition of approval has been incorporated in order to make sure that the final sign program for both Andronico's and the new building is coordinated. Again, it's a very important building. I'd like to have some consistency in terms of location, size of signs, and making sure that at least they think about each other as they're thinking about each individual sign program. There are public improvements that have been required along 65th and 66th Street. As you know, there's perpendicular parking along those streets that at least along 65th Street has been required to be removed and replaced with parallel parking. Sidewalks will be added, and the applicant will be required to improve in -- for sort of appropriate and modern standards in the degree to which the use of the building will be increased. Sidewalks will be added, storm drainage, curb and gutter improvements, and those have been outlined in the negative declaration. With regard to 66th Street, in order to accommodate the loss of parking along 65th because we're going from perpendicular to parallel spaces, the report mentions that we should go to angled parking, and a number of possibilities are open here, and that the final street cross-section and layout will be determined by the Public Works Director in conjunction with the applicant, but that perpendicular -- I mean, excuse me, angled parking is recommended in order to make up for some of the loss of parking on 66th -- excuse me, on 65th. With that, I will be glad to address any questions or concerns the commission has against us, but we're first recommending that you open the public hearing about the negative declaration and the project. Take any public comments, and then if you so deem appropriate, first approve the negative declaration and then approve the resolution and conditions and requirements of the project, which will approve this project.
Thank you. Before I open the public hearing, any commissioner comments or questions?
Yeah, I have some questions, and they're all on page six of the negative declaration.
The actual neg-deck?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're -- I'm trying to figure out the details of -- well, it's page -- maybe this is the staff report on the negative declaration. It's --
So this is the neg-deck, so you're talking about the packet?
The packet, yeah. Not the neg-deck that we had before, but the packet that came today.
Okay.
The 65th Street and 66th Street design, my impression is that it is 60 feet face of building to face of building, that is, Ryers and to Grove on 65th and 60 feet on 66th as well.
I think it's more than that.
I don't know. I'm making it up. I'm trying to get back to the question of what kind of -- what width sidewalk are we going to get, which I couldn't get out of this.
Okay.
And then I was going to make a snide comment about the seven-foot-wide parallel parking spaces on 65th Street, knowing that many of us don't drive Izzetas, and then the rest of it seemed to make sense.
Okay. In the negative deck, there is -- there are some cross-sections laid out. I'll find them.
I didn't bring it with me tonight. And also, the impression I get is that on 66th Street, the diagonal parking is an interim solution, and it's always assumed that it's going to go -- it's going to revert back to parallel parking someday when the other side of the street develops.
Not the way that we've -- on 66th?
On 66th.
No.
It could be diagonal forever.
Thanks. Is it figure six? Yeah, great. Yeah, it could be diagonal forever. And that's what the recommendation that we're making to you is that the degree of traffic along there is not such that that couldn't be accommodated, given the overall width of the street. So it would not be an interim improvement. It would be permanent unless -- I mean, I think the city always has a discretion if there's problems to make it parallel. What?
It's public parking.
Yeah.
Sure.
The way that the traffic study has been set forth is that on 66th --
What page are you on, Claudia?
I'm on -- it's actually figure six of the initial study, which is right past page 24. It lays out cross-sections for both 66th and 65th, so on 66th, the interim cross-section is -- it doesn't actually have a sidewalk width. You could dictate that. It sets forth 18 feet for parking and a 14-foot travel lane.
It's in the appendix, saying, you know.
And the ultimate cross-section would be after the -- both sides of the streets are -- after improvements occur on the other side of the street, it would be eight feet of parking, 16-foot travel lane with sidewalks on either side. So we have not dictated a sidewalk -- or yes, we -- no, we have not dictated a sidewalk width, a specific sidewalk width. Are you concerned about having an adequate sidewalk width? Is that what this is about?
Yeah, on 65th, I think it matters because you get a good deal of foot traffic on 65th. If we knew building-to-building dimension, we'd know what that sidewalk was, I guess.
Maybe we should hold it and wait for the applicant.
Yeah.
Is there anything else at this point in terms of commissioner comments?
Oh, I haven't.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anyone wanting to speak on this, please come forward. Can we hear from the applicant? Okay.
You want to do your presentation first?
Okay.
I'm Mike Rippon's from R&amp;L Warehouse Company. It's referred to as Rippon's and Lipinski. I've been a tenant in the Corde Properties since May of 1982.
Can we -- where are you located?
1490 66th Street, 1480 66th Street.
You're just north of the project?
Right.
Okay.
This one area in here, pedestrian impact, and then if you take a look here at Emory Technical Center, existing on-street parking requirements, and you give it a great deal of attention, which is very worthwhile, however, I get the impression that you're looking forward to a similar type of project taking place on the north side of 66th Street and will all be eliminated someday. That's the impression. Now, I've been here a long time, and as an active, ongoing business, and my neighbors are also, we need to receive 48-foot trailers in and out of our docks. And will there be enough room on 66th Street for us to do this, with a competent truck driver being able to back into our pits? We have four doors on 66th Street, and we utilize two of them quite often with occasionally 53-footers, hardly ever, but mostly 40, 45, 48-foot trailers. And on occasion, when Grove Valve was active there, we had a very comfortable relationship with our industrial neighbor. We would unhook the tractors so we were sure that the fire trucks could get through if they had 48-footers on Grove's side, and on our side, we had 48-footers sticking out. Can that be given consideration, is what I'm asking the commission?
I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the question. Are you asking for continued permission to block the public right-of-way during certain periods of the day?
Never want to block it. Never. We always want to have access, particularly allow traffic to flow through, but we do have to have capability to back up the equipment, which may cause temporary blocking, let's say for two, three, or five minutes, depending on the skill of a truck driver to back in.
So you're asking that with a conceivable narrowing of the travel lanes, it would be more difficult to maneuver or not to block for a longer period while the trucks are loading and unloading?
Right. I mean, I'd like, in your thinking about this project, to give consideration to the north side of the street. And next door to us is -- italics is how you pronounce their name. They receive 20-footers on long bed trailers also. There's a lot of trucking on 66th Street.
So is Cal Steam.
And Cal Steam also, correct. So that's what I'm here for tonight, is to ask you to please give consideration. I've been here a long time, and I want to stay here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm still Russell Gates, and this time I'm speaking for my business, Metalko, which is on 67th Street, and we've been a business in Emeryville for 53 years. I'm also affiliated with California Contract, which is at 1470 -- pardon me, 1468 66, which is right across from the loading docks that are being constructed at Andronico's. I'm also speaking for Menus &amp; Music and for Mountain Light Photography, who could not be here this evening. Like Mike, we're equally concerned about being able to operate our businesses with trailers that need to be backed in and out of our loading docks. One thing that Mr. Rippon's forgot to mention is that the proposed entrance and exit to your parking garage is right across from his business, and that will be a very major impact on his business. During the process of Grove Valve and Regulator moving out of their complex, in order for them to come out of the loading dock, which is in the same area that these new ones are being added on to, they had to come over and ask us to move all of our vehicles in order to get their trailers in and out of that building. And we anticipate the same thing now on a daily basis. And in your report, we don't note anything as far as traffic being addressed with Andronico's needs, like how many trailers would go in and out of their property daily. And that's a very big concern because it could be totally disruptive to all of our businesses up and down that particular area right there. In addition to your traffic plan and in the mitigations, I don't understand myself the impact that's not really being addressed on Hollis Street and going towards Berkeley as well as Bay Street and going towards the freeway. Those are very congested areas as it is now, and there is no policing of those areas. There is just some outrageous driving that goes on in those areas, and it's only going to be further exacerbated by this plan that's being put up. Any given day, we note people driving in excess of 60 to 80 miles an hour on 65th and 66th Street. It goes on daily, and it's very dangerous, and I think that's something that needs to be addressed that no one seems to be paying attention to. When trailers are being pulled in and out on both of these streets, the people that drive, as irrational as the driving is that is occurring in this city, are only further inflamed by the fact that we're trying to operate our businesses. And good truck drivers only take four or five minutes to get in and out of our loading docks, but it's going to be a very disruptive situation with the plan that you have on the south side of 66th Street. As far as your mitigations on construction, I have some very -- well, I would have to say well-observed comments on what's going on right now as far as the outlines of things that are supposed to be done. Example, these areas are supposed to be watered down to keep the dirt down. They have never been -- that has never occurred yet. In addition, all the off-haul debris is supposed to be covered. I've seen one truck during this ongoing process covered. The rest of the trucks are just loaded and off they go. Supposedly, there could be asbestos in this. Supposedly, there could be lead-based paint in this. None of the environmental concerns that are addressed are being looked at at all or being followed through. There are no safety measures that are apparent with any of the construction that's going on. The work that's being done on the roof, there's no protective barriers for the workers. They use yellow caution tape, and we've seen employees that have been stripping the roofing off, skylight areas and what have you, nearly fall off the building. Debris being tossed off the side of the building. There's nothing being done that's outlined in these mitigations as far as those areas go. I've witnessed workers urinating on the roof. None of the workers are using any respirators, dust masks, anything that should be done if they're following callosious standards and what have you. Dumping of rock, sand, and construction materials occurs in the middle of 66th Street when in this report it says it's supposed to occur on the chain link side of the fin, the construction sides, and that's caused some very serious traffic problems just in that, just these huge trucks unloading gravel in the middle of the street, and then they have their loaders coming and moving the gravel around. It can go on for several hours, and it's a detriment to our businesses and traffic. And also, I think that the parking situation, the way that it seems to be aligned on the south side of 66th seems to be only adding six head-in parking spots when, in fact, an entire city block of parking's been wiped out on that side of the street. And Menus &amp; Music and Mountain Light Photography are very well affected by that. They have evening seminars that bring 50 to 60 vehicles in, and all that parking along that side's gone, and it's not available for them anymore. And thank you.
Oh, before you go, I have a couple of questions.
Me too.
You had indicated that when there was some requirement for the trucks to egress or ingress into Grove, that they requested you to move vehicles.
Yes.
I don't understand what that's about.
Well, they have -- they had one loading dock at all times, a Grove Valve and Regulator, and for them to get these 48-foot trucks and trailers in when they were moving out in order to accommodate backing in to those loading docks, they had to move all the cars on the north side of 66th.
Oh, okay.
And it would be upwards of six to eight vehicles, anything that's parked directly across the street. Now, that's a traffic hazard -- not hazard, but problem because you have truck drivers backed up trying to get in and out, and they're looking for people that own the cars, and it just -- it really makes a problem.
Okay. The second question I had was, you talked about speeding vehicles going 60 or 80 miles an hour.
Yes.
Have you ever reported that, or have we?
Well, I've been in the process of trying to address that in a letter with some of the other neighbors to the city.
Okay.
And most of it stems from -- there's a car tune-up place on the other side of 66th and Hollis, and it's just a free-for-all for when they leave there with their sports vehicles and stuff. But there's repetitive, daily commuters that do that.
Okay. That's something I think we can address.
Right.
Okay.
Well, the good part about that is I'm up the street near the railroad tracks, and I've complained to the owners of that, and so apparently they're going westward.
Same people.
Yeah, they're going west and leaving me alone. How about, did you call any of the -- there's -- do you have any numbers to call when the gravel was dumped in the middle of the road to complain?
No, no.
So...
That's another issue, too, that I discuss with our neighbors, that it's fine to, like, as Metalko, we never received a notice of this meeting. Our neighbors, Cal Steam, never received a notice of this meeting. Menus &amp; Music's received it. Mountain Light did not. Our property owners, the Cordeurs, did. So we're wondering if there might be some way, when we have meetings like this, that you have -- you list all the businesses on 66th Street in your blue book, but in fact, none of us are real -- not all of us were advised of these meetings and could be possibly be included to see if we can work together to help with some of these situations. Could a little extra effort be made towards the rentals there, the people that rent?
Yeah, I think Claudia can answer that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Not going to be an issue.
The least we can do is tell you that there's a -- for a nominal fee, you can get all agenda items for the...
A nominal fee?
Yes.
$12, really.
It's not very expensive. It's an annual fee, and you can be sent copies of the -- am I correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Of the planning commission agendas as well as the city council agendas.
Okay.
And you may -- one person may want to -- it sounds like you have an interested group, so one person may want to apply to that and -- or subscribe to that and then pass it out to the remaining portion of the group.
If you really are interested in that, you can call Susan Poindexter, if you want to write her number down. It's 596-4373.
Okay.
Can I pursue the question of the trucks and the loading docks on 66th, because that may be the most serious, long-term subject you've raised tonight?
Right.
Construction activities will come and go, but that's forever. And if a 45-foot box needed the clearance of a handful of cars on the opposite side of the street and the old informal parking, which was perpendicular, which was 90 degrees to the street on both sides up against the buildings, that was already relatively wide compared to what's being proposed here tonight with a sidewalk and then 60-degree diagonal, which has the same dimension as 90-degree.
Right.
You're going to be eight or 10 feet narrower on the south side than you were before.
Yes.
Right out of the door. And if that's a serious problem for the current existing continuing activities on the north side of 66th Street, I think this commission needs to look at losing that diagonal parking. I mean, as important as it is to replace parking lost on 65th Street, those loading docks for ongoing businesses, you know, have been here since before the turn of the century, and I can't see killing all those going businesses by not letting them have use of their loading docks. You also raised a question about the frequency and size of trucks coming into the Andronico's loading dock on the south side of the street, and that was a subject of some discussion a few months ago when it came up. And we were assured at that time that these are small fixed-box trucks and that the deliveries and deliveries to and from the site will occur early in the morning and not during the day or during any peak hours. All right.
One thought that you might keep in mind is if, in fact, they're using full-size trailers, which if you look at the size of their loading area, there's no question that they will be. It's set up for four, to accommodate four large trucks at one time, and if there was some restrictive hours of use, maybe during our business hours, to where they could only use that for two rigs at a time, there would be more room to accommodate maneuvering in and out of their dock area, and I think that that would have a positive effect. Whereas if they needed to use those all four bays, and it was at off-hours, like before 7:00 in the morning or maybe after 5:00 in the afternoon, then there wouldn't be that parking problem that we would have across the street.
Good.
I think there was a restriction. Yeah, let's see it.
Okay, I can't remember. Okay, thanks, Claudia.
Thank you.
Right. Anybody else want to talk on this? Okay. I guess we can hear from the applicant?
I'm not Jennifer Flick singing. Good evening. My name is Kavamasi. I'm the architect for the project, and I would like to actually just walk around the building and explain what anybody -- anyone that would go around the building would see, and that is that on 66th, there's a lot of smaller businesses that are... And that is that on 66th, there's a lot of smaller businesses that are sort of either light manufacturing oriented, they're not definitely white-collar type of businesses. And hence our sort of take on putting the front door into the building on 65th, realizing that 65th is much more traveled. And it's really the front door. And the Andronico's loading dock really ended up on that side, on 66th, exactly because we felt like that street was sort of the back service loading area of the building. You know, the loading dock for the Andronico's isn't part of this project, really. I mean, it's part of the neg deck, I suppose, but it really isn't what we're here to discuss. But as you can see, outside of the Andronico's loading dock on 66th, there is no other.
I can really see that, you know, you want to make.
I can see it really well.
Here.
Stuart, can you be my vanna?
I actually.
But as you can see, outside of that loading dock, which we had permits for about a year ago, there are no other loading docks being, being proposed for the 66th Street side. So, so in essence, this part of the project adds no extra burden on 66th in terms of trucks and loading. It does put the entry for the parking structure on 66th. In terms of the actual width of the street, I think that the developer is more, will be more than happy to leave the street exactly like it is now, so that there's no added burden to anyone across the street. The 90-degree parking works for everyone. The road curb is what the public works people have agreed to, to let us put in even, I mean, ultimately, they, I suppose, when, when things do change quite drastically across the street, something will happen. But for the moment, we will be more than happy to leave it exactly, no added bushes, trees, or anything. We'd be happy to do that. So that's on the 66th. On this, on 65th Street, as you can see, we've added the, the new entry. And part of that, the reason for doing that was to not sort of tear the skin of the building apart. It's just such a beautiful glass facade on it that we felt like adding something to it was almost sacrilegious. So what we did was to set back the actual front doors into the building 40 feet back. I'm going to go pick up this model. This model is just that little portion of it where we've taken two small 20-foot-wide areas and we have poked a couple of holes to get into an area that we're taking the roof off of. So in essence, it becomes a little courtyard that you walk up to. There will be a handicap ramp also. And instead of adding something to the front of it, we decided to actually take a little, I would like to call it the marker for the entry as opposed to signage. And in order to also make it a little bit more of an interesting element to the building, we haven't quite figured out technically how to do this, but the idea was to be able to project images on it. And it's going to take a bit of doing, but there are enough artists in Emeryville that we might be able to get somebody that does video art to be able to do something. We've actually seen it done before, and the image is extremely faint. So it's not like a really harsh, bright image that will get projected. So in essence, it really, the impact of it, as you can see in those renderings, is a muted one, sitting about eight feet behind the facade as it is now. And then the front door into the building is about 40 feet behind. The areas that are colored in sort of a terracotta reddish color are where the, where the actual offices are going to be. And we don't quite know exactly how many spaces they're going to get cut into. We do know that the developer would love to see someone come along and take the whole thing in one shot. But it's unlikely, and we're looking at how we could cut it up to, up to maybe 10 spaces. So they're still fairly large spaces. In order to get around the problem of this piece of the building being sort of deep, and it does have clear stories, which are really beautiful and let a lot of light in, but we've dropped in these light wells that actually are open to the sky that let light and air into the building. The parking structure's on three levels. And we initially started out with two entry and exits on, both on 65th and 66th, and now we've gone to just the one on the 66th Street. I worked on the parking structure for Children's Hospital that has 800 parking. This has 550. And that building has one entrance for all 880 cars, and there's a lot of traffic, and it seems to work fairly, fairly well. As Claudia mentioned, the basic idea here was to try to preserve as much of the building as possible. So all of the brick is going to get cleaned up. All of the concrete is going to get cleaned up. All of the glass and the sashes are going to get cleaned up and exchanged. Maybe the, all of the glass will be taken out and replaced with clear, low-emission glass. Is that what it's called, low emission? Anyway, that sounded wrong. Anyway, so the idea was really to have as little impact as it, as possible, and just sort of freshen it up and give it a little love and care and make it into something that, that becomes a good home for a few businesses. That's about it. Any questions?
Yeah, I have some questions about, about the neg deck on this, and I don't know whether it's appropriate to ask you or maybe one of your other compadres, but basically it comes down to what was raised earlier. And the issues of compliance with, you know, standard construction, i.e. covering of the trucks as they're moving, watering down the dirt, and the issue of the rocks in the middle of the road, I think. Okay, great.
Good evening. My name's Jim Ellis with Ellis Partners, and we are the owner and developer of Emery Tech. Thank you for hearing our project tonight. In answering your question, I was remiss in doing something, which I usually do when we do retail developments, which is setting up a meeting with our neighbors. We typically do it with residential neighbors. It passed my mind because these are all commercial businesses across the street. So typically, we don't have many complaints when we're in commercial areas. But I've told my project manager in this meeting to set up a meeting next Thursday, which is when we're on-site, meeting with our contractors, and to have them invite everyone across the street to, first of all, explain to them the first stage of construction, which is Andronico's, which, as Kava said, was a previous permit application, conditional use permit, and is a completely separate effort from the issue being presented tonight. But, you know, clearly, I as the owner, paying the contractor, want to know if there are any problems with my contractor. And we will make an effort to address those in the meeting with the neighbors. And, you know, rest assured, we'll certainly be talking to our contractors. I did want to clarify real quickly, though, a couple of things that were said. Clearly, there were some observations made that indicate that there's some problems with dust control and people not being too lazy to go to the bathroom. But as it relates to any environmental compliance issues, we have implied with all, we have complied with all environmental regulations on this project. We've done extensive environmental studies, not only per sequo, but on our own, just as a result of our own policy. And this site has been studied ad nauseam, full asbestos and lead paint demolition surveys have been done, and licensed contractors have been removing any hazardous materials, et cetera, et cetera. Any of the materials being off-hauled from the site in trucks, like dirt, do not contain asbestos or any other material that would endanger health and human safety. So I just wanted to clarify that point. Did you have any other questions?
Yeah, I had one more. But I think, I think getting together is probably going to eliminate a lot of the issues that are going to come up, and it'll help both people because this is going to be a cooperative effort, I think.
Right, correct.
The other thing is, the item that was brought up about the possibility of coordinating the usage of the loading docks with the neighbors, now that just might be a good neighbor policy issue that you guys can discuss and work out.
I can, I think, clarify that just a little, to give it some background. There was a gentleman up here talking about Grove when they were detooling their factory, basically, having to ask permission to move cars. They're referencing a loading dock that we're eliminating, that is in an approximate location of where the new entrance to the parking structure will be. And for future general plan reasons, the city's required us to put the entrance there because it doesn't conflict with future road improvements. That dock will no longer be used for truck staging, so as it relates to any truck staging on our side of the road, there will be nothing occurring at that end of the property. As Kava indicated, the only place we are staging trucks going forward is in the Andronico, the new Andronico's fully resest truck dock, which ended up being about a half-million-dollar venture to install that. But it is consistent with other cities across, at least in the Bay Area, that now require any new trucks dock facilities to be fully enclosed inside the building. So we went through that expense to accommodate the city's requirements. And as a result, having those docks set back into the building makes staging those docks much easier. And it would be my opinion that as long as there are no trucks staging out into the street, directly across the street from those truck docks, staging into those, into the Andronico's docks at any time of the day or night shouldn't be an issue. It shouldn't be a logistical problem. We are significantly reducing the industrial, the truck traffic to the property by converting it to office. It's a much quieter use.
Excellent. So that's answered my questions. Anybody else have questions of the applicant on those particular issues?
I'm trying to think if there's anything else I wanted to say about that.
I will say that it's a beautiful building, and we're looking forward to it.
Yeah, we've become enamored with the design as well. I guess it's known as being Baja's architecture, and there's really nothing like it in Emeryville. And it's pretty rare that something like this is still intact.
Yeah. Okay.
I had a couple brief comments on the conditions of approval. Is this an appropriate time to talk about that?
I think so. I would like to just make sure that we conclude or resolve the comments that were brought up to make sure that we have them categorized and make sure the commission is clear about the responsibility of this developer, as opposed to Andronico's, as opposed to speeding along 65th and 66th Street. I think those are valid concerns, but they warrant responses, and I'd like to be able to do that at some point. But Mr. Ellis is welcome to go ahead, and we can jot those down. So while you're going through the conditions of approval, he'll know which ones concern him. It's fine.
Okay. So do you, would you like to talk after?
I'll do that. Why don't we just?
Okay.
Let him do that.
Thanks.
Regarding the car parking that, on the north side of the building. Can you quote number to us so we know where you are on the conditions? Okay. I'm sorry. What? Page six. Page six. Page six. Correct. Now you're making me find it. C? C? Yeah. Okay. Here we go. Yeah, I have it. I got it. There are, there are two issues I wanted to discuss. One is just the issue that was discussed previously regarding the placement of parking along the north side or 66th side of the, of the street. As Kava indicated, we'd certainly be happy to not change anything about that side of the street. But realistically, that's probably not the responsible thing for me as a developer to say. I do believe, however, that what has been indicated in the environmental review is just about right. I mean, I think parking needs to be retained there. I think, as Mr. Getz pointed out, we need to pay attention to the depth or the encroachment of those new improvements into the existing width of the street. But I would propose that we look at how, if we have to put a sidewalk on that side of the building, which is an option that the city has in their approvals, that maybe we consider a narrow sidewalk. And additionally, we would like to request that the 90-degree parking format be allowable under this project approval as opposed to the 60-degree parking that's referenced in the conditions of approval. So that's one specific request we have. And there's really no efficiency to making, to reducing the depth required to make 60-degree parking as opposed to 90. And as one of the neighbors mentioned, I don't think they want to see parking further reduced in that immediate area, and really neither do we. I think that the neighbors are already hard-pressed for parking as they park, before we fenced our area off and started construction, they were all parking on our side of the street. And secondly, on the same page, there's discussion of the specifics of some road improvements, both on 66th Street and 65th Street. I would like to request that there be some clarification of exactly what is going to be required of the developer as it relates to improving the 66th Street portion of the, the 66th Street frontage and the 65th Street frontage. Specifically, if you, if you were to read this in its most general form, we are being, we could potentially have to literally demolish half of the road frontages on both sides of our project and completely rebuild, regrade, new subgrade, new asphalt, all the way to the center line of the road. And that, to me, would be a huge burden to the project. It would be a significant. It would be a significant, you know, privately funded public improvement project and most importantly, I really don't feel it's needed. We realize that sidewalk and pedestrian circulation is important and we are very willing to do that. There's going to be a bicycle lane recommended. We're going to be doing that. And then in addition, installing landscaping and reconfiguring the parking, which was talked about earlier. I would like to request that we not be obligated to be subject to future and unknown improvement obligations into the travel ways of the road that are of an unknown cost. And secondly, and almost more importantly, the way the document reads is that there could be some kind of future obligation down the road to fund replacement of the pavement on the road at a future date. And as an owner, having a future unknown cost obligation and not knowing the timing of it could be detrimental to us. So we would just ask that we go ahead and do the important improvements of sidewalk, bicycle lanes, landscaping, and parking reconfiguration, but that we be relieved from any replacement of travel lanes in the roads. And...
Should we stop and talk about each of these or wait for him to go through his whole list?
Well, he could go through the whole list. I've got a mark so that when you go through the conditions, and I believe the Public Works Director could respond to some of those specifics, too.
I just have one more, which is just a clarification in the conditions of approval. We wanted to clarify that any requirement to underground utilities, which I think was a more general statement in these conditions of approval, be limited to new construction. I mean, we have, we have, this permit applies to about two-thirds of the building. We've already received permits to build Andronicos, et cetera, et cetera, but there, I believe there are some telephone poles and electric poles along frontages of a project that have already been entitled. So we just request that the undergrounding be limited to the subject tonight, which is the, this Emery Tech office portion of the project. And that is it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I really think your idea again of meeting with the other businesses and getting together and having a, working out arrangements, I think is going to be very helpful.
Well, we will do that next Thursday if it works for the neighbors.
Great, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? There being none, public hearing is closed. Okay. Miss your comment. So what's your approval? You want to go through the conditions of approval?
Well, can I ask a couple of questions first?
Certainly.
About the driveway into the parking structure.
On 66th?
On 66th, which is a single two-direction driveway. The question is, is there anticipated to be some mechanical control? And if so, will it be right at the sidewalk? And what provision will there be to reduce queuing that backs out into the street? In other words, the layout of parking within the parking structure doesn't seem to easily accommodate a pocket that queues five or six cars. And while Kava quite well pointed out that the 800-odd parking structure for Children's Hospital has no problem. It has some other advantages, including the ability to accept queuing and also the 24-hour operation with a steady stream of cars, whereas this is likely to be a nine-to-five sort of operation with a gang of cars in the morning. And that's a concern. I just want to know how we're going to deal with that because you recall that we struck a compromise that may not work well for Park Avenue at Pixar.
Yes.
The idea is that that opening is 24 feet wide and there are three lanes. And the operator will actually open and close during the hours where, that's exactly what's happening at Children's, where two lanes going in would be for the morning and one for coming out, and it will get reversed in the afternoon. So we have a company named Largo, which is, which only does parking structures, and they're going to help us set it up so that it really works. The number of elevators, the level of lighting, I mean, it's like, it's science now. It will work because a parking structure that doesn't work for the developers is a bigger disaster than one that would...
I don't care if it's a tangle inside the structure. I care about the street.
Right. So do you think that the three lanes answers the question?
What's the queuing? Can you stack two cars before you get in the street?
It's actually two cars, correct.
So if it's a Caldecott with two coming in, you've got four cars you can stock.
Correct.
And what's the turnover? How long does it take to receive a card key and open?
This will probably require, there are actually genies that are handed with the card access that will allow them into the building, so they could actually press it open as they're getting up.
That sounds satisfactory. I'd like to see a condition of approval similar to the Pixar condition that allows for the planning director to review and approve or disapprove something that seems like it will suitably protect 66th Street from queuing.
Andy, did you have some more?
Well, I had some questions about construction activities and rules and maybe the provision of a telephone number that people could call about construction activities. And Mr. Ellis raised a question about off-site street improvements, frontage improvements beyond the face of the curb. I'd like to know what the plans were for there. And that's it. And I have some conditions of approval thing notes that I'd like when we get to that.
Okay. Hank has some illuminating comments.
Quite often at this stage of the development, our conditions are general because we haven't seen site plans and improvement plans to really make final decisions. So we deserve that right. I don't think in the past we've been overly difficult in requiring improvements and I don't expect that would be a problem in this case. But we really need to see specific improvements sometimes to really catch things that need to be done.
Can we ask about 66th Street? The site plan here, if you scale at an inch per 30, looks like it's about 25 feet of landscaping and sidewalk, narrowing the effective usable street by 25 feet and then putting 60-degree parking, which is just as wide as 90-degree parking, so that we've effectively narrowed the street by about 25 feet for purposes of maneuvering a truck to get into a dock on the far side. And I know these guys are not going to go for that. I know that's going to be a tragedy for them. And so the question is, is it acceptable to this planning commission and the city generally to leave the apron, the rolled curb and apron parking and 90-degree parking for now, knowing that someday we're going to parallel parking as shown in negative, in the mitigated negative declaration on 66th?
I think that we're well aware of the problem of parking conflicts with getting in trailers and so forth, and we've just, just really kind of made a survey recently of Horton South of 53rd Street, and that problem exists throughout there. So I think what we would like to do is to work with this a little bit and see if we can accommodate the current needs without having to go back at some time in the future and make reductions in parking to make it work because it creates a problem when you've created a condition where there is parking and then try and do away with it.
Well, this mitigated negative declaration says that the long-term solution for 66th Street is parallel parking. You're going to lose most of your parking on 66th Street is what it says right here. And regardless of what we're saying orally in this room, that's what it says in this document as I read it. And that's something that I think we're going to face someday. Right here, it's on the sketch, it's on the drawing here. It's your same figure six that you pointed out to me, and it says interim cross-section and ultimate cross-section. And the drawing that says ultimate cross-section shows parallel parking, and that's a big loss of parking. And if that's, if we're pretending it's not going to happen, you know, ostrich works for a while, but not forever. And, you know...
Okay. I really can't answer that question any differently than I just did.
Yeah.
I think a lot of it relates to really what is going to happen with all the traffic and where it's going to split between 65th and 66th, and you can't rule out the future. I think we can perhaps make some minor adjustments that are going, that may work for a period of time, but more than that, there's just so many changes going on in Emeryville, you can't guarantee anything. In terms of the undergrounding, that's a general condition as well. It's not really economical to underground small portions of streets without having some overall plan for undergrounding throughout. And right now, we don't have plans for undergrounding 65th or 66th Street in the foreseeable future.
Just put that as a condition that he has to do it down the road when everybody else does, right?
No, our standard is new condition, and normally when the city says, okay, we're going to underground, they make the property owners participate.
Right, that's what I mean.
Okay.
Well...
He doesn't do it now.
Yeah, it really determines on the extent of development that we're looking at. I mean, we required it, we required it of Chiron because of the extent of their frontage. We required it of Pixar likewise. So with individual uses like that, it really doesn't make a lot of sense.
I think his misunderstanding comes from the lack of a word "new" as the second word in a condition, and he'd be happy if we put that word "new" in as Mr. Mooney is wanting to do.
I agree with mine.
Okay. Okay, any other comments or...
Can staff clear me up on, I believe it's page five of the conditions of approval?
Do you want to do, do you want to go through the conditions or do you want to...
I want to know what it's referring to. It's Roman numeral four A4, and it talks about contained in figure two appendix A of the initial study, blah, blah, blah. And if that's this thing, this isn't figure two. Figure two is an intersection.
Oh, yeah?
What is that?
Yeah, it's figure, figure six.
That should be, that should read figure six. I'm just trying to be on the right page.
Do you want to go through the conditions of approval from the beginning or...
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do unless there's any other questions. Okay, let's do it.
So they're asking for changes?
Yeah.
H, Roman numeral Ih, change that to all new.
That's page two?
Page two.
You mean one H?
Roman numeral one H.
One H, all new onsite, okay. I have a clarification of one J. We have a new exhibit that's revised from the exhibits in the resolution. We reworked the calculations regarding overall valuation, so some of the figures concerning the building permit and other fees changed, so that's at your desks.
This is the June 24th one?
That's correct.
Has the applicant seen this?
Yes, they have a copy.
Hank, you had a comment?
In terms of the onsite electrical service and communication lines, really what that refers to is to services. If there are existing services, they should be placed underground as part of this new use. I mean, that's what we would normally require, and that's not a big expense. It doesn't refer to anything in the, in the street. It's the service from the building to...
To the street.
To the street.
For a project this size, that probably makes sense. Are you intending to provide all-new services anyway?
It was not clear to me that you were talking about just the branching of the utility from the right-of-way to the building.
Right, building services.
All I was concerned about was having to...
Right.
...have all utilities that happen adjacent to our site.
Yeah, that's not what's...
That wouldn't be onsite.
That's not what's intended here, so it should be all services.
Onsite means on your property, so that would be no overhead phones, phone drops, no overhead electrical drops.
So get rid of the word "new."
No overhead sewers.
And the record shows that we're reflecting the, he doesn't have to take out the telephone poles.
Commissioner Mooney accepted the absence of the word "new."
That's new.
Yeah, it is. I think I should leave. And I'm sure that the city staff did the work right. It just amazes me that the Bay Shaw Mountain is only less than $700.
That's a contingent assessment.
Right. That's change of use, right?
It's, you get a credit for existing use. Again, this is a different zone.
Right. Yeah, but it was right across the railroad tracks. You're right.
You guys put it in the one zone.
I remember.
Okay, still on page two. Anybody else got any items? Okay, page three.
Yeah, on, near the top of the page, Roman numeral two C, Arabic two, provision of fire equipment carts. How many?
I'm sorry, I didn't get that from the fire department. I don't know how many.
Okay. You're on for some carts.
I presume the applicant knows.
Would the number of carts be specified in the specifications?
It would be, that is the equipment per cart. It's not the number of carts. And I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't, I wasn't able to get the number of carts. I know it's more than one. I think it's probably one per floor, but I need to, we need to verify that.
Okay.
Does the applicant know how many carts is being required?
No.
In Roman numeral three A2, this geotechnical study about shaking, is this more than the usual structural analysis to substantiate the design under the UBC?
No, it's exactly that you want, yeah.
That's all I have on that.
Can we go back to the fire cart and at least specify that it's no more than one? I don't think they need more than one.
And then begin his parking out afterwards, right off the bat and narrow the street for the guys across the street? Or are we going to bite the bullet and let it be ugly and keep the informal perpendicular parking apron up over the rolled curb bump against the building like it's been for 50 years?
What size is a sidewalk, you say?
I don't know. There are no numbers anywhere in any of this stuff, but this is a 30, 38 feet to the inch scale and it's almost an inch.
Twenty feet.
Twenty feet, okay.
Twenty-foot sidewalk?
Twenty feet of sidewalk and landscaping before you begin your 60-degree, 18-foot-deep diagonal parking.
Because I, where I was off, I ran up to go look at the lot book up at Old Town Hall there and, or, Old Town Hall, upstairs, so to speak. Not there yet. And it, I believe it's only 60-foot right-of-way on 66th Street. I couldn't get that confirmed, certainly 80 feet on 65th, but from what I saw, it looked like it was 60 feet on...
I mean, I, this is a fairly important issue for the neighbors and for Hank and for the applicant. And I just think that there's enough question that I'm feeling very uneasy about, that you have some specific concerns, that obviously there's some assumptions being made. And the loading and unloading and other activity on the other side of the street is fairly important to make sure that we have clear. So I.
But do we have to have it come back to us? Can we maybe decide for them to work it out administratively?
That would be okay with me unless.
And we sort of give them an indication on what our preferences are?
Well, obviously to make everything work as best we can, it's with a rolled curb, that's great.
Well, if, if you work something out and there's, there's not an objection from the neighbors across the street, and there's not an objection from the developer, and there's not an objection from Mr. Van Dyke, don't bring it back.
Okay.
Mr. Van Dyke's always reasonable, so there wouldn't be an objection.
That's right. It'll be bad if he objects. We want it back here.
I, I think with the, the meaning that they're planning with the neighbors across the street, that can start the discussion going on what they really need. Further refinement of the plans would just follow. And I think we can settle most of this, most of the concerns outside the planning commission and just bring it back for confirmation.
Okay, great.
Madam Director, any wording you'd suggest in there? Something like the, maybe a tag sentence that says the details of this will be reviewed by the planning director and if necessary, brought back to the commission for further.
If there's a question or concern remaining or something like that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Something like that. It, it, this says, right, this says angled parking. I guess angled parking is 90-degree is an angle.
Well, I, I wanted to leave that open.
Right.
The, the initial study said 60, I think.
Yeah.
And we didn't want to be tied to that. We thought that there should be other things explored if they worked. And again, it was so, we, we were trying to develop this as we were going to you for approval, so.
My interpretation is 90 degrees is an angle, 180 degrees is an angle, and.
Yeah. Well, sure, 180 degrees, that'd be parallel, right? That's, yeah, excellent. So we're covered.
Well, that says that you all are going to work it out and bring it back if there's a problem.
Is that in on page five?
I wanted to add a, a sub paragraph seven regarding the queuing for the parking garage.
That's where you'd put it?
Yeah, that's where I would put it. Final design to be reviewed and approved prior to the issuance of a building permit.
The applicant had said page six, but presumably meant page five on the conditions.
Okay. Yeah, I think it was.
Right.
Okay. Page six?
You have a few questions. At B at the top of the page, sub A and B, it's the same question that I ask each time, which is, how many cars will stack in the newly created free right-turn lanes southbound on Hollis approaching Powell and southbound on Christie approaching Powell?
So as long as we tell you sometime that's okay, you're not expecting it?
I'm not expecting an answer tonight. I didn't get one the last four times I asked it.
And again, this is in relationship to the mitigations for.
The mitigation measures for which this project is a contributor as well as IKEA and.
Everybody else.
Into the sunset.
Exactly.
Right.
Okay. Okay, Andy, you had some more stuff on page six?
This business, Roman numeral five B one about adequate illumination, I guess we don't have to change it for the zoning ordinance requirements of 0.6-foot candles to apply.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anything else? Six, page seven?
Are we going to put something that this sign is going to only change no more than every 30 seconds or something like that?
What did we have for?
Stop that. Don't get into that one.
Okay.
That has to, that sign has to come up for.
That, that sign, yeah.
Yeah. We've got one of those.
They're always there.
Anything else on page seven?
I mean, that's been for a little while.
Page eight.
Oh, no, I'm, I'm sorry.
On seven?
On seven H, how many bicyc, is this six bicycle racks each to accommodate 100 bicycles?
Uh, no. Let's see.
How come that's not just part of the parking? Where, how, why? That's supposed to be parking in and out, right?
Yeah. What's the, what's the standard?
There isn't. You get so many deductions from so many bicycles unless we did something new.
How about, how about six bicycle racks accommodating a minimum of two bicycles each?
Oh, sure. What standard did that come from?
Claudia Capio, the bicyclist.
I would like to have two bicycle racks.
Containing six. Does the applicant have any feeling? Good.
Good.
Nobody can say.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure. You're going to provide what's necessary.
Is this something for the plan checker to get an extra 50 cents or something?
Okay, any other comments on?
Wait, wait, seriously, where's the code?
Actually, that was a recommendation in the initial study for.
Oh, okay.
I didn't make it up completely.
Okay, I mean, anything else on seven? There being none? Page eight. Anything on page eight? Nine?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, Andy.
How did I know?
Hours.
Yeah.
Looks good to me.
Consistency.
Looks good to me.
Being consistent with Pixar. And I figured who would be bothered?
Not by any residential areas.
That's right.
Emery Bay two.
There's a train that goes rumble by there every two minutes.
They're used to noise. It won't bother them one bit.
And we built the, we had those built to a noise specification that would, and this is going to be mostly inside work. What's the deal?
Yeah, it's not going to be a problem.
Washing the outside windows, right?
Okay.
Washing or squeezing.
Right. There is the one thing that, Andy, you had brought up and we're, we're all into, and that is the, the phone number situation. Is this where we want to put this?
Yes, that's probably going to be added as a, as sub-paragraph six, a notification of, I'd say something similar to what we did on Pixar where there's an emergency, there's a person designated on site as the complaint manager and there's a number available at all times in a visible location.
Okay. Mr. Ellis, is that, you understand that and what we're, what we're trying to get at here?
What I would propose, since this is a commercial district, is that our construction superintendent be instructed by us to comply with the ordinance and to be basically available via pager or, or cellphone or.
The, the problem is, as Mr. Getz rightly points out, is Emery Bay kitty corner. Do we want something over there so that people think that there's noise going at 6:00 AM that they can look out their window and make a phone call?
If they can get across the tracks.
You can at 6:00.
Well, superintendent's there before most of the crew shows up anyway.
Yeah, that's true.
And if he, if a cellphone number, if he has is circulated at Emery Bay two, it'll ring off the hook if there's people there too early.
Mm-hmm. If you just put it on the sign there, then you don't have to necessarily go across the street and go to Emery Bay two, is, I guess is my thought.
Okay. And, and you, that area is, is localized and there can be staging or whatever away from that area to, to help minimize that kind of stuff too.
Certainly, yeah. Okay. Seriously, on Saturday, I think Saturday probably should be eight to five, but I don't see a problem with seven to six Monday through Friday. That's my thought.
This is most interior stuff. Nobody's going to hear it.
What's, what's, what does everybody else feel?
Parking garage being constructed.
But it's inside. Still has a wall around it, right?
Going to be piles for that parking garage?
No, it's good.
Is it inside the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Helium filled.
So the commission, the commission is acceptable with seven to six, or seven to six on Saturday also? Well, we're out loaded on that one.
You know, we hear complaints, we revisit it. I just don't think there're going to be any. Everybody down there is using a lot of noise.
Okay, I, is there, that's, I've gone through all the conditions.
And I move approval of ND 98 dash seven.
We first got to do the negative.
Yeah, that's it. For the first resolution.
Smart.
I, I'll second.
ND 98 dash seven?
Yep. Okay, can we get a roll call on the mitigated neg, deck?
Sure, it's Commissioner Ku.
Aye.
Commissioner Owens.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Aye.
Commissioner Getz.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney.
Aye.
And Sherlutz.
Aye.
Do we have to do the conditional use permit and a design review separately or can we do them at once?
They're all together, so you can do one.
Can I get a?
Move approval of resolution. Now I can't find it.
UP 98 dash five?
Yes.
DR 98. DR 98 dash five.
Subject to all the changes in the condition of approval.
Second.
Get a roll call.
Sure, Commissioner Ku.
Aye.
Commissioner Owens.
Aye.
Commissioner Jermaine.
Aye.
Commissioner Getz.
Can I ask a question and then vote? How do we change the one on the north for parking on 66th Street?
For staff to work it out.
Oh, staff to work it out and if necessary, bring it back to you.
Aye.
Commissioner Mooney.
Aye.
And Sherlutz.
Aye.
Okay, well, congratulations. We look forward to.